This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, folks, I think we're gonna get started. John will be coming shortly. So I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board, and this is a joint meeting with the Southampton Water Commissioners. But as we get started, let's first stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. All right. Would you folks like to call your meeting to order then?
Yeah, I started.
Okay. All right. So we have, John will be coming, I'm sure, and we have three members of the Water Commissioners here. So any open time for the public? I'm not seeing anybody offhand. So basically, we have no appointments or resignations, and we just wanted to have a discussion with the Water Commissioners about a variety of things, but just in general, about public water infrastructure, sort of our demand and supply use of East Hampton, and just current capacity, future capacity, concerns, issues that you may have that we need to be kind of aware of, I guess. So however you would like to lead that off, I guess.
Well...
And we will talk about the ARPA application as well.
Can I just ask a question? Are you sure that John, John's the one that actually initiated the idea of having a meeting?
Unless he thinks it's downstairs.
He's not waiting in the dark for anybody to know.
I actually just texted him.
I thought I could see the parking lot, the superstore cars there.
No, he's...
I just wanted to just make sure.
Yeah, he was the one that really wanted to be sure that he was here for that.
He didn't make the HR meeting yesterday either.
I never heard from him.
I think he's around, but anyway. But let's talk a little bit about maybe the water use. We could start with the water use this summer, from what we had to deal with the water restrictions, and are we off the water restrictions now, and what's the situation there, I guess.
We're off the water restrictions.
So we're still meeting.
The water restrictions are a really tricky thing. So we're permitted with our well, and Joe, you correct me if I get it wrong here, because we're permitted with our well to use water year-round.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have water restrictions. We have a certain amount of capacity, and when we start reaching that daily capacity, we impose voluntary water restrictions.
Okay.
So our well is in the process of being relicensed, and they're behind, it should've been relicensed, I think, three years ago. When they re-license, they're gonna come up with new lists, and we will have water restrictions then, and they'll be mandatory. So right now, we also buy water from East Hampton, which was a long planned-out process. Took us about eight or nine years to get to the point where we had an interconnection where we're actually buying water regularly, and we mix their water with our water all the time. East Hampton does have mandatory water restrictions, so they have a trigger when the Mill River, I believe, Joe, is the Mill River?
Mill River.
When the Mill River gets to a certain flow rate, the state demands these restrictions. We're a customer of theirs, we have to follow their restrictions. So then, we end up having permanent, you know, their mandatory restrictions.
So we follow what they do during the summer?
We follow what they do because we buy from them.
Yeah.
And we use, we use the maximum amount of water a year that we can take out of our well legally. The state regulates us. The well actually has tons more water. We'll never get more capacity out of it because of the fact that the highway's too close to it, so we would need, we would need them to move the highway so that we have, you know, that we could take more water. It's just one of their requirements. The highway's in the zone of protection, so they won't let us take any more water than we will. So that well is at its maximum capacity.
Which is what?
So I think annually, roughly, it's 130 million gallons per year.
The capacity of the well itself, or that's what we use?
That's what we're allowed, right?
Okay.
What we said of that is the total capacity?
So...
You mean, how much more could we take?
Yeah.
It's unknown, but...
It's unknown.
Joe worked on it when it was put in, and he did some of the pump tests on it.
Okay.
So, you know, they, it's not, it's not official.
All right, so the state mandates 130, the state mandates 130 million gallons?
Yes.
And that's per, per year?
Per year.
Per year, so that's all year-round, not just...
And we have a daily...
Yeah.
Yeah, the daily, when you do the math, it's like .36...
.36.
.36 millions gallons per day.
Which comes down to 550 gallons per minute.
So you can determine in the summertime, like, where your capacity lies, or on any given day? You could say whether you're under or over?
Yeah, we have every day, we have a report of how much water we use. Some days we, but that number's an average, by the way.
Yeah.
It's an average. We do use 900,000 gallons on some days. You know, that's in the middle of summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the .36, so the average for the year is like, you know, 360,000 gallons a day, or .36. So, but on a peak day, like Jim said, we use, what, eight or up to 900 gallons?
Yeah, almost 900,000.
Yeah.
But that's a combination with East Hampton now, too.
Right, right.
Oh, huh.
Okay.
So we were trying to pump 900,000 gallons a day out of that well, and trying to get water from East Hampton. We had a different way of getting it where we got it in by gravity, but when we built the new pumping station there, we can bring it in at any time now. It makes a much more flexible system.
But on a peak day, I mean, that maxes out our pump, right? Our pump is...
Our pump is running a ball. It runs all day, it runs 24 hours.
From East Hampton?
No, no, our...
Our well, yeah, our Glendale well.
And if you go anything over that, then we have to, you know, pump in from East Hampton. Now, there's still, there's a, you know, tank, there's a 700,000 gallon tank, that, you know, on a real high-demand day, if the pump can't keep up, you still have some reserve in the tank that can, you can draw down, you know, a little bit. You can't do that for any, you know, significant length of time.
So in the winter, you know, typical days, in the 260, somewhere around like 260,000 gallons a day. So most of our, most of our usage goes to watering in the summer, lawn watering.
Right.
And it's actually, 80% of our customers use the minimum water. It's about 20% of the customers that use higher amounts.
Really? That's interesting.
80/20 rule. That's interesting.
And we have two commercial, sorry, we have two big commercial customers, the grocery store and the car wash are both.
I thought car wash was in East Hampton. I thought they drew...
It's on East Hampton Sewer, South Hampton.
Oh, huh. That's interesting.
Yeah, so you pays a premium to pump this sewer.
Why did I think they recycled that water?
They can, they can. But I'm not positive. There's a system in there recycling. I did the plumbing and building, there's recycling tanks there, but I'm not sure that it's efficient to use it or not. Well, car wash is efficient anyways, but those are two things.
So the car wash and big line?
Big wire, yeah. But we do have residents that use more water than both of those in the summer.
Really? And what percent of people in town have public water?
About 75, 80 plus 70, I think.
Yeah?
Right, so, so, yeah.
Does it continue to go up?
So it's like 40, rough, rough numbers now, it's like 40...
We have 1,630 services. Now, a service could be a single house, it could be a two-family.
Yeah.
The apartments, the big apartment complex here...
Each service is...
There's like, there could be eight apartments on one service, but there's about 4,800 people that are serviced by it.
Good amount.
By John Moore.
I don't know, what, 6, what, 6,000 people?
About 6, yeah, 6,200 or about...
The demographics that we used for that is 2.5 people per service.
So...
This was more like about 3, you could do that.
Yeah, but it, yeah. When you break it all down, it comes up to 2.5, or 2.6, I think, maybe.
Yeah.
But, um, so we have, also have a, the DEP has a per-person limit that they want 65 gallons a day per person average. Last year, we were around 59 gallons per person per day.
That's good.
Yeah. Which is good, because, you know, California, they're screaming about water, they have 125 gallons per person per day. So, you know, our state is way ahead of the other side of the country in conserving water.
They have such a big agricultural, though.
Yeah, but that doesn't come into that.
No?
Yeah. Golf courses don't come into it either.
Oh, it doesn't?
Golf courses can use whatever they want.
So our golf course is on?
They're on their own water supply well.
For irrigation, they're on their own wells.
They have a well.
Their own wells.
Yeah, the clubhouse is up.
It's on public course.
It's on public park. The course itself is on?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the 4,800 households or customers are all along College Highway, though?
No, no.
All over the place, right?
Yeah, we, we, we don't cover, like, up former road and up the mountain. We've got High Street and all that, and then pretty much every other street in town other than former enough, right?
The whole, not the middle area, nothing on middle.
Yeah, we don't have middle, we don't have the high part of East Street. We're all the way down to the end of Pequot.
And the whole ponds area.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a, you know, future plan for looping that through either middle or East Street to connect that end of town back to, like, up where J and E is.
Yeah.
And I'm not covered.
No, he's not, right now. Tim's not on it. Because they get, on Valley Road, they get over the hill, you know, so.
Right, I'm sure he...
So it ends up near, it ends up at Valley Road. It goes down Valley Road, it just goes a couple houses up Valley Road. It does get J and E. It doesn't get anything past, there's one house past Valley, it hits, yeah. But it doesn't get the, you know, the last four houses out there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, meanwhile, we've got good coverage all the way back.
Right, right.
You know, down Palmerine and all that. That was all the way down Palmerine. And there's like a couple little missing, there's a couple little missing pieces here and there where there's no water main in front of two houses, or, you know, things that just didn't get done, or whatever. Most of our system is new. Joe, Joe and the town put it in.
How new?
Eighties, eighties and forward.
Yeah.
A lot of it. This entire section from just past my house, which is past Brickyard, all the way to center of town at, at Palmerine Meadow is old. 1932.
1932.
Except the new bridge, right?
Yeah, the bridge is new.
Yeah. I thought East Street was also...
East Street's old. The street on the street.
Clark Street, too.
Is Clark new, Joe?
Clark is old, no.
Clark is new, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
There's some old stuff on that street.
Is there a map?
There is a map.
Yeah. We'll probably talk about it because of the, your plan and ARPA money and all that, but I'm just curious.
So, yeah, on ARPA money, that's, this is the main we're looking for, thanks, even though we had water leak in here for, for two years or so.
Right, right.
I got the map from the, from the master plan.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of houses that are up on, this is like, about six, seven years old.
So how do you know which ones are the older pipes? What color are they? Red?
Look at the legend.
They just identify what it is.
It just says diameter.
Yeah, identifies the main. That one doesn't tell you the age.
It does, Calhoun Highway, and I can't see that far.
Yeah, that's all right.
Typically, the bigger diameter ones are new ones.
Right, right. Because I know that when we were first looking at the bridge on East Street, I know that we were told that the pipe is incredibly small, and that that would be part of the plan to go ahead and...
Yeah.
From Clark Street, from Clark Street all the way to, what's that new subdivision there, Wishburn Meadow?
Yeah.
That's all Brianville, that's all 12-inch, 12-to-8-inch.
This is the bridge here.
Yeah.
So that's all new. This is all new. And then all that end of town is new, yeah.
Yeah, Pleasant Street.
Town Pleasant Street's all new.
Oh, so it's really...
So the old main is...
Yeah, like you said, just on the other side.
All on here, all the way down here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no, sorry, I went too far.
Stop it, just...
It's funny, because it's not, it's not a street map, it's always right here.
It's far, yeah, Palmerine, right?
So we replaced, we replaced this a couple years ago. This here is 1970s, 80s.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Stuff in front of Big Y is around there.
This here's all, this here's all moved, all up here.
Went up east, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then all down there, all the way down into that area.
So mostly, it's...
Right here, all the way to the center.
Yeah, right, huh.
Needs to be replaced.
It's old.
Yeah.
You know, 100 years, 100-year-old. We have a piece of it, you know, it's completely tronked down inside of the curvuration, which is, you know, it's like rust in the inside.
And those are only like 6-inch diameter to begin with, or something else?
6-inch along here, yeah?
6-inch, 6-inch pit chest.
If one of those anymore come through College Highway.
I know. So back to the question about the capacity, I think John's original question was right around the time that we had that three-week terribly hot weather, and had wondered whether or not, it doesn't sound to me like you're concerned about capacity.
No. So we have a memorandum of understanding with East Hampton to buy a certain amount of water. If I can remember that number, it's a lot.
It is a lot?
Yes. We can dull our capacity.
It's expensive, though, because one time when I was signing the warrants, I think it was a $22,000 warrant item. I don't know how...
Don't forget, we get $8,000 electoral bills.
Okay. I was just curious to know, during, you know, was that a quarterly bill, or was this...
So what happens, what happens when we're buying East Hampton water, it, we can pay for it, but we don't gain any money off of it to pay for system improvements. So our rates are set up so that we slowly gain money, so that we can borrow money and improve the system. When we're buying water from them, it's not happening. You know, it's just kind of, it's just kind of running through the system.
Right.
We're paying, we're getting money to pay for it, but we're not making any profit.
Right.
I don't want to say profit, but it's basically profit to be used to take care of the system.
What percentage of our town's water consumption comes from East Hampton?
It varies right now.
On average, just for a year?
We don't, we don't know.
20%, 30%?
Well, just, so, so 2021, for the statistical report, I think we, close to 9%, but that's not a tip of a year, because our pump was down for a while. So we then, when our pump was down, we had to buy East Hampton.
Right, right, yeah.
Right, so, so I think it was 9% was East Hampton, 91% for us. But, for example, the year before that, it wasn't much at all. Of course, the pumps maybe weren't...
So we, we actually, we got, we got the pumping station working, and then the well pump died and needed to be pulled. And it was a perfect storm, because there was no parts available because of the pandemic. So we ended up with three weeks on East Hampton water, which would have been horrific before we had that station, it would have had to go there.
Right.
You know, would not have been easy to do. The station saved, nobody even noticed, other than Bill.
Yeah.
So, so that, you know, that year, we used a lot of water, and, you know, Tom blends a certain amount of it to try to control the quality, because our pH is a little up, and we can blend East Hampton water with our water to get our pH to where we want it to be, so that we don't have to add the KOH to it. So...
We had a lot of growth in town. I mean, I'm just wondering if you're, like, keeping statistics on rainfall, or, you know, availability of water, or whether or not it's, you know, drought conditions, what percent you taken from East Hampton? Because I think the question that John ultimately raised is, at what point would you do a moratorium on building because of the water supply?
On expansion. What is our capacity?
Well, I mean, we've been planning to expand our capacity, and, you know, we've followed through with it, and our, our plan was to buy from East Hampton. We have another option of, there's a well that was developed back in the 70s. It's over on Pequot. It's actually almost in the pond. It was developed and was ready to go online. They were just waiting for the final funding, and the town voted to fund the regional school instead. So it just sat there, and now it would, because of time change and the DEP change and regulation change, now that well that's just sitting there, we could bring it online, but it would be expensive. East Hampton water was cheaper than bringing it well online, because there would be filtration requirements for it, because it's affected by the pond, and it was actually over in the contaminated area.
Yeah.
So, you know, we went through our master plan, and we studied this for a long time, and that's where we came up with the Hampton Interconnection was the best for the future needs of the town.
It sounds like the same scenario with the Taicomedy Reservoir, too.
Yeah, we could use that, too, but it's expensive.
But it wouldn't be very expensive to filtrate and all that.
Yeah, we looked at buying from Hoyoke, but they wanted, it's more complicated.
It's more complicated in fact that the city of oil injects fluoride into their water.
Yeah.
In order for Southampton to be able to use that, that would have to be an article in front of the annual town meeting to allow us to accept another water supply that has fluoride. You can't just arbitrarily put fluoride in water because you think it's the greatest thing for you.
Right, right, right.
And so that kind of let Hoyoke out of the picture. We had an agreement to tie into the city of Westfield down in the East Mountain County Road area, but as a result of the contamination of their wells 7 and 8, which are down in a golf course behind the airport, on East Mountain Road, we backed right away. We don't need that problem.
Yeah.
And they don't have any capacity anymore. So East Hampton was our best.
Yeah.
East Hampton has, I don't know if I have the exact numbers, but I think they withdraw 16 million gallons a day from...
Yeah, nowhere near that.
Right, and they use...
So that's their capacity, 16 million a day?
Yeah, they're well set up, because they were a mill town.
Right, and that was why they have all the...
Yeah, the mills don't go former anymore, and so, so they had a lot of the excess water, and it worked out well.
Right.
Yeah, and it worked out well for both communities, for the reason that East Hampton had a withdrawal permit of, like you said, 16 million gallons. But what would happen is if you can go for a very short period of time and not meet your withdrawal, then they reduce your withdrawal.
Oh, really?
And by us coming on board with that, it can, just that, that helped them to save their withdrawal.
Have they raised the prices a lot on the water? No?
We're not asking about that. Have they raised the prices? They have not.
No.
Because I know when I lived on Line Street, it was East Hampton water, so people on the Southampton side, is that still true? People on the Southampton side have East Hampton water? They just, like, surcharged us, like, to death. Well, it jumped up, like, all the time.
Yeah, there was an out-of-town surcharge.
Right.
We have, I don't remember what it is, we have a special bulk rate with them, which is just a little discount.
Yeah, they don't charge us the surcharge.
Well, that's good. And they haven't raised it a lot over the years?
No, there's actually, there's actually, and I'm not positive on the legal setting of this, there's a memorandum of understanding between the two departments that set the rates, but I think that there's another level that can be done between you and their mayor or city council could, could make a more permanent agreement. Kurt was involved in that.
Right.
But I don't know the rest of that. It's something we should probably look into at some point, and solidify it more, because we're going to continue to use it more and more.
Sure, yeah. If that's our main, you know, go-to source. I mean, if we don't really have too many options to bring on the other well on Pequot, or to be, cost-effective to, to buy it from Hoyoke, I mean, then obviously, we're going to use it more and more.
Yeah, and as far as paying for, you know, our, our rates are low. They've always been considered low. We're below the average.
And this contract that we have with East Hampton, does it have an expiration date, or, you're saying you're suggesting?
It's just an MOU.
It has an expiration date, but if we could move to the next step, is my understanding. I don't know completely. Because Kurt was really involved with that.
Just let it auto-renew.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Joe? You have a wealth of information. I hope somewhere, what you know is all written down somewhere. But I just have a question about the Taicomedy Reservoir, because I do find it strange the way a city can come in and just claim land. What actually happened there, and do we have any recourse in terms of that land? It's by far the biggest piece of conservation land in town. And I'm just wondering exactly how that...
It was all part of the actual legislature.
Yeah, okay.
So that all...
So Hoyoke, basically, just said, we want that land, and legislature gave it to them.
Yeah, because water's important, and city's important, so that's why they did it. But they did, they did compensate us. They compensated us with water.
Yeah. They still pay a tax on, on it. We get tax from them, I believe.
We're supposed to get some timber money, too.
Right, right.
When they cut, they cut timber every 20 years or something.
Is it in perpetuity?
Yeah, I was just looking into that, because somebody from town asked me if that had to be renewed. As far as I can tell, it's permanent.
Yeah. I heard something like 99 years or something.
It was.
Would you say?
There's two, there's two laws.
Okay.
There was two laws, though. There was, it was set up for the White's Reservoir, and then it was amended for the Taicomedy Reservoir.
Somebody I would know looked into this at one particular point. I don't know all the details. It still amazes me that, you know, anybody could just claim land that belongs to a different town, or claim resources. But I had heard that it was a 99-year thing.
See, somebody was telling me that, too, and I didn't find anything about it. I wasn't around back then.
Yeah, no, no.
Joe, it's probably Joe.
Even Joe wasn't either.
We can get, I'm treated water from them. We could tap in, but like you pointed out earlier, we'd have to process the water.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It's a big expense.
So we're, we've never gotten any water from them, or have we? No?
We did.
From time?
From 1932 up until...
Okay.
I don't know, probably around the early 70s, early 80s.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we did, okay.
Early 80s, when we did the, the production well down at Palatch Highway.
Okay.
And, because we're entitled to 126 gallons per day per capita population, but there's a population cap. I can't remember the number.
It's in this master plan, because I, it's like 300, it's 325,000 gallons a day.
Yeah, something like that.
We don't get any.
Yeah.
We don't get it. We wouldn't want it any, because it's, we have to treat it.
We have to treat it. We have to build up some water.
Treat facility.
We would have to take it one step further, because we're not, we're not considered a continuous system, which means that we need an offspring of the city of oil, so we can't fall under their rules and regulations, because they, they do a little, I think it's reverse osmosis now, over there. We'd have to go to a full-blown filtration plant, which now, you know, you're talking big, 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 big money, and the only place we could put it would be down on the Pequot Road area. And we're actually, we're actually better off the way we are right now without Hoyoke.
Without it, yeah.
We're a lot quite a bit, though. It said, not exceeding 125 gallons per day for inhabitants, or up to 228 millions gallons per year, which is, which is a lot more than what we use today.
Right. So back in, back in, I wrote it down, and I want to be sure I understood, 130 million gallons per year allowed is from what again?
The Glendale well.
From the Glendale well, well.
Yeah.
That's what we're allowed from, to buy from East Hampton?
No, that's all by our permit.
By our permit, okay.
Right, from the...
We can buy whatever, buy whatever.
We can buy whatever we want.
Okay. So we can take from our own well, the 130 million gallons, is that it, per year?
That's true.
Per year, okay.
And, you know, things get more complicated down the line. There's, conceivably, we could buy from Northampton through East Hampton.
Why? Do they have an agreement with Northampton?
There's a connection there, but, you know, that would have been involved more.
Because, just because, you're just seeing within the last couple of years where we would buy a lot of from East Hampton. This has been a continuous thing that we have bought water from East Hampton for several years, prior to what you're seeing here today.
Okay.
Because we had an interconnection down on the corner of County Road and Cook Road area. Down in there, we had an emergency. But what happened there, it would be strictly gravity. So what we had to do was valve out this whole center of town here, run it off the well and run the ponds area off of, off of a direct connection that we had down. And that connection is still there to the best of my knowledge.
Okay.
And what, the way that we controlled it was they would take our meter readings from, from the houses that we had down there. And that's how they billed us.
But that's all history now, right? Because now we got a pump there.
Now all the water will come from there. That's still an emergency backup if we had to have.
If we had to have, yeah. And so the amount of water that we bought like over the last couple of years from East Hampton, has it been relatively minimal or is it...
No, it's been, it's been seen a minimum, especially with the well being down.
Well, a lot of it will be down. I think we bought like 12 million gallons.
But that was when the well was down, right.
So, you know, it's going to take us four or five years to see what the average is going to be.
Yeah.
And then Tom's managing it too. So he, like I said, he's trying to mix their water with our, our water to create better water.
Right.
So that's difficult. But there's a computer system to do all that and he takes water every day from East Hampton now, a certain amount.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the cycle is on that.
So with that though, just so I'm clear, we're not getting water from East Hampton only during the summer time, but we're actually buying water year round from East Hampton?
Yeah, we switched year to year round.
Year round. And that's just been the last couple of years or so that we've spent?
Since I got activated.
Yeah.
A year and a half ago.
You kind of have, you're almost compelled to do it because you always want to have fresh water. And if you shut that thing down for the winter, then you try to fire it up again, you're going to blow all out of water just flushing the thing out. So you're better off exercising the thing and use a little bit each week.
Yeah, keeping it going.
Just to keep the water fresh.
Yeah.
So just...
Makes sense, yeah.
So this was from the 2021 statistical report. So this shows how much by month we bought from East Hampton. So like when the pumps were down in May, we bought like 11 million gallons. Pretty much every other month it was, you know, about 2,000 gallons a month except for the few, the few other...
2,000 gallons?
Yeah, it wasn't much.
To keep the pumps working.
Yeah.
And you don't want the water to sit in the end of the pipe. Because you get a slug of dirty water and if you pump a slug of dirty water through, somebody will get it.
I mean, the summer months, like August, it was 65,000. But that's probably, I think all pumps were online then, but it was just the demand in the summer was higher, right?
Didn't you just say that the other one was oh, 200 and something thousand when the well was down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but 65 during August, that doesn't sound like a lot.
65,000.
Right.
That we bought, yeah.
Yeah.
That was, you know, 21. I don't know, I don't know the numbers this year.
These numbers are always here on the...
And you maximize 130 million gallons? I mean, is that, you use what you're, were allowed?
Yeah, we do. Actually, we're allowed to go about 10% over that, but...
Yeah.
Because we have gone over that actually in some years, but we haven't, but we haven't gone, yeah. We haven't gone over enough where it's going to be.
Can I ask a clarifying question in regards to restrictions? So you say, said Southampton has voluntary restrictions, but East Hampton has mandatory restrictions. When we're purchasing water from East Hampton, how do, how do their restrictions apply to Southampton? Are you guys monitoring that? Are they monitoring that or...
There's a communication between the department heads that, you know, that they're going under restrictions. So when they get notified that from the D E P that they're going under restrictions, they'll let Tom, oh, that's when Tom puts out the message now. It's really tricky whether it is a mandatory or not, but if, if we don't abide by, East Hampton could tell us to shut it off. They have the right to tell us to shut it off at any time.
Right.
How is that enforced?
Enforced?
Yes, thank you, with the, with residents?
We go around and give, you know, door stickers and nobody goes around and arrests anybody. We, you know, we point it out to people, we hand them the, we hand them the rules.
Like when people are watering in the rain?
There's no, there's no, there's no officer on patrol. We, you know, I've asked the police chief if he wanted to do it, he just left it.
There's definitely a few laws that were greener than others around town.
You know, we have that little sign that we move around if we see somebody using water. We put the water restriction sign in front of their house just to give them the warning.
Plus you know what their usage is. You just said that, you know, that there is a few private residents that use more water than some of these large businesses.
Yeah, but you've got to be aware though, some people do use a lot of water internally in their house. I mean, I used to have six people living in my house.
Yeah.
So I went over the minimum all the time.
Right.
So I always, I always paid in tier two or tier three, whether it was, whether it was January or, you know, so you don't, you don't know. You can't...
Right, you don't know how many people are living there.
It's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
You know, and then people, people turn in, people to us, could say, I saw him watering his lawn, he's not supposed to water his lawn. But, you know, we go over there and find out that the house they're talking about is on a well. Because you might have four houses, four houses on the town water and the fifth house is still on it as well.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, I do think that the sign this year that said water restriction, I don't know if it said voluntary or not, but it said check the website. I don't know if that's particularly helpful. I think it would be more helpful to just say no watering before, you know, like, I don't know how many people would go home and then look on the website to find out what the restriction was. From my standpoint, it just seems like it would be better to just say no daytime watering or something that would be simple.
Did we mail that out this year? We were talking about it.
You mean the restriction of all?
We were talking about something that has something with the restrictions.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But I think, I think even now we've got enough little mobile signs around town. I mean, I think, you know, make, make use of them and maybe we can put them out a little bit, move them around a little bit.
Depending on which level you're in.
Yeah.
Because when we're running the level three, it's easy, no water during the day. However, right now, when we're at level one, because I read the restrictions, because that it's linked to and it's very tricky. It's like one day a week between nine and five and so...
Yeah, right.
You get that all on a sign.
Sure.
Or have it read accurate.
No, but especially during the crucial moments. I mean, when we're under real, you know, serious drought conditions like we were earlier in the summer. I mean, I think, you know, having something that's very clear that just says no daytime watering or something.
And we're still in drought and we will not, that drought will not come out unless we have a snowy winter.
Right.
That's the only way that that drought will come off is if we have to have snow on the ground and it has to leach into the ground slowly.
Right.
If, if we don't have snow, we'll be in that drought.
Sure.
You have to get snow before frost.
Yeah.
East Hampton posted several signs around the, on the perimeter of the town that said critical water shortage. I mean, that sent a message, I think.
Well, it wasn't a shortage. It wasn't a shortage.
It was critical water restriction.
There was no, there was no shortage.
No, critical water restriction, critical drought.
They had one at the roof.
But it was something that notified people that...
Right, and it all, and it all comes down to preserving the health of the aquifer. And if you drain down an aquifer, it drains down streams, which causes fish to die, which causes all kinds of problems. So that's, that's what it's all tied back to.
Right.
It's one of the, one of the whys. I mean, I go through the master plan and so it's like published 2015, 16. This is a bar chart, it shows the water usage and so this is like millions of gallons per year. From 2000 to 2015, even though our population's been going up, the water usage is pretty steady.
Remember, all the new houses that get built have lower flow.
Right, I was going to say, there's been a lot more, I think, just again with, over the years and with public education and just general knowledge of conservation methods, you know, low flow toilets and, you know, all sorts of things, right? I think technology has kind of changed with it to kind of help the idea of water consumption to a certain level at least, I think.
You know, I wouldn't be worried until we started getting over that 65 gallons per person per day. That's, that's a worry something.
And you said we're around 59ish now, so we're still...
We've been up to, I think, 62 or something before. And I think we've been as low as 55 by summer.
Yeah.
And we, and our system is tight enough that we stay within 15% or under upon account of water, which would mean, like if you had a leak, water may break or something like that. Well, we're, we stay under that 15%. And there ain't too many communities that can say that.
Okay, yeah.
So we can also control, without a restriction, we can control water usage by changing rates. So we have a three tier system and we could, we could either adjust the amount of gallons that people get for each tier or we can increase the third tier while protecting the people who are still, you know, being reasonable with their water. So, so you know, if you raise the third tier significantly, those people will learn and water less. Some of them won't.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's the best way to control. We're not there yet.
Yeah.
You know, maybe next year, maybe five years, maybe 10 years.
Yeah. But right now, you're not concerned about the increased growth, the water capacity, any of that?
No, actually a lot of the, no, I don't know that. Do we have any, do we have any new subdivisions coming on this year?
No, just be a couple that are down on, on Pequot, that are the most recent ones, right?
The Fitz Farm, Fitz Farm.
Those are being started, well, one of those is all fully occupied. The other one is just coming up.
Yeah, right.
And they pay, you know, they pay to, those developers give us a significant amount of money.
To tap in?
To tap in. That goes into our retained earnings and we use that to fix this main out here.
Sure.
That's how it all works. If, if we got quite a few years without a subdivision, we wouldn't have, you know, the cash that we have.
Sure.
And then we would have to raise rates, so it's a weird thing. It's just like the power company adding electricity.
Yeah.
They're giving you electric cars. They don't have enough electricity because they're making everybody use electric cars.
So speaking of the aquifer, you, the water department actually was instrumental in preserving two pieces of land at least in the last five or six years. One of them's on Palmeri Meadow Road and the other one is, actually both are on Palmeri Meadow Road. So is there an area that you think that the open space committee and conservation commission and the select board should be aware of that, like if we have an opportunity that we should really, you know, like try not to support development on that particular area? Because the aquifer covers a huge area of Southampton. So I'm just wondering, was, was there something about the properties on Palmeri Meadow Road that were particularly, was it proximity to the well? Was it, what about that made it so desirable compared to so many other parts in town that, that do have the aquifer underneath it?
So the area around the Norris School and like in the gun club and Hillside and all that is our primary recharge. So the water that goes into the ground there comes out of your faucet.
Yeah.
The land that's got, that we got the...
Courtney property.
The other one, the one that we just got the conservation restriction on.
Yeah.
She just did it last night.
The Matson property.
That, that property, the water all runs off and then goes into our recharge area. So there's a, there's a stream that runs down off of that property and crosses Palmeri Meadow Road and it goes into the gun club. And it doesn't come out unless it's raining heavy and it comes out, it comes out across your parents' old farm.
Yeah.
And it causes all the trouble down there.
Exactly.
So most of the time that stream runs into the gun club area and goes into the ground, which just disappears. And I mean, I look at it all the time. You can, you drive, you drive down Palmeri Meadow Road and you see water running in. You go down College Highway, there's no water coming out.
Do you have a map of that recharge area?
So one of the aquifer somewhere.
So now the Courtney property.
One of these, this is one of these, yeah.
The water resource right here, but that's the main, I don't know if that's what you're talking about? It's the water resources in general.
119 though.
And that also has the chapter status, the chapter lands.
Yeah, we have, we have a map that, is that identified? I don't know if this is...
It says, it just says water resources and chapter lands. Actually, there's a few of them.
That's like Kestrel land too.
Is there online, someplace I can find the, the water recharge area, you know?
I don't think so. We put limited amounts online. I don't, I don't think we have a lot of those maps online.
Yeah, I can't remember one.
Do you think I might be able to get a copy of it somewhere? Do you think there is one around?
Yeah.
Tom has it?
Yeah.
Tim's got it, he's not giving his up though.
I'll just make a copy of it, make it for you around. Open spaces up to me.
Right.
Oh, we just have to build it.
So the Courtney property is also part of our recharge area based on knowledge that well drillers provide. When well drillers drill private wells, they record a lot of information and that basically tells you which way the water's flowing. That all runs towards our well. And, you know, recharge land is land that's got sand or gravel and a little bit of loam. Courtney property, you walk in or it's tilled, you can see, you can see gravel in the loam. You know, so it's a good piece of property for us. All the land that we have, we put the conservation commission along Glendale, Litzipka Farm, that's not recharged.
It's not?
It's all covered in clay.
Oh, really?
It's well head protection. So it was, it was purchased with water department money back in the 90s.
Yeah.
State grant money.
Oh, really?
When it's all clay covered. So our whole well is covered in clay. So if you, if you were to spill something near the well, chances of it going down the well are slim because it's all 100 feet, 100 feet over.
The total well's 140 feet deep and there's about 120 feet of best clay you ever saw for making bricks.
Yeah.
And it's, the static water level on that well is roughly 18 feet above ground, which means that that's a free flowing well. And that well will yield about 105 gallons a minute, free flowing. If we're not pumping on it, it will free flow that amount. Now, if you were to pack that well tight, the weight of that clay and the way that it is formed against the outside of the existing casing, there's two casings in that well. There's a 16 inch casing and it's finished 10 inch inside. And that 10 inch goes right straight down to the ledge. Then we set the 16 inside with 10 foot of weld screen. I don't know if you know what a weld screen looks like. Looks like that.
Oh, huh, okay.
It's made of, that's...
Metal then?
Metal.
Yeah. It's stainless steel. Then we pull the 16 inch casing back just enough to expose the screen. Then we pack that annular, what we call Cape May stone, which is a stone which is all, it came from Cape May, New Jersey. And each stone is exactly the same size and it's manufactured to that size. And that's packed around the whole outside of that screen area prior to us pulling the 16 back. You could dump a truckload of chrome heating oil on top of that well field right in that well area and then it would never get to.
Really?
But if you dump that same truck up at the Norris School, it's going to get into it.
Yeah.
It's going to get into it, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
So go back to your other one. This map shows...
There's a well field right down in there.
Right, so like that's a Norris School.
Yeah.
So that's our well.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure, the Matson property was over here somewhere, I think?
No.
Oh, it's up in there. But the Courtney was up, way up here, right, Palmeri Meadow.
Upper Palmeri, yeah.
Up close to East Hampton. So this, this is the so-called medium yield aquifer. So, by the way, I think the reason we were interested in this was because of its proximity to the well and the aquifer.
And because the floor of this aquifer is in this direction.
Right. So this is medium yield and then this one means...
That's high yield.
High yield.
Yeah.
So...
And there's a, a well field that the city of Hoyoke has.
Right.
Right down there near somewhere that's abandoned.
Right, so 300 gallons a minute versus 100, 300 gallons a minute.
So that's our property then on Pequot, right, the water department.
So your higher priority area, if it became available, would be in this quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the floor of this aquifer is this way.
Not necessarily because, yeah, but the land up here too, the water can go into the ground, which pools here.
Right.
This runs out of the ground somewhere on its own.
Yeah.
Right.
Somewhere's down at a lower elevation because we're at 190 feet or something. So if you look here where all the major development is, where all the major development is...
It's on the, the master plan. The master plan is online, but I don't know if the maps are.
Oh, well, no, I'm just going to take a picture.
I don't think the maps are online, probably not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing them.
Yeah.
I remember seeing the master plan.
Okay, good. Well, if there's, you know, that's all good information. I think we appreciate that. Okay. Good. Well, if there's, you know, that's all good information. I think we appreciate that. It's unfortunate that John's not here, but he'll hear the meeting and he's only had a lot of the questions about it.
It's very complicated.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's very interesting to learn about all this.
Oh, yeah. And I'm the newbie on the board.
And it's, it's also reassuring here. Yeah, that the capacity is there. And I think that was our, that was our huge worry.
Right.
If we didn't have the state looking over us, we could provide all kinds of water.
Yeah.
If the state makes us conserve.
Sure.
That would be, and College Highway down here. When, after we finished drilling that, we had a pump in there that was capable. Because we had to run a 7-day pump test on that thing to assure that the quality and quantity were stable. And when it was all said and done, the EP left, we cranked it up just to see what that well would produce. We were pumping 2,000 gallons a minute out of that well. And we were leaving, and I drawed out, so what they call a cone of depression, which means if you have a large cone of depression, the water goes like this to the screen. Well, our cone of depression looked like it was more like that, which is pretty, that's, that's the best.
Where our well is, is the sweet spot in town for that volume of water. If we took and moved that well to the other side of College Highway, we wouldn't get it. If we moved it further out in the field, we wouldn't get it. It just happens to be a geological hole where there's a bunch of gravel in it and.
Perfect.
It was, it was the perfect spot.
Yeah, great.
Because when the Big Y wanted to build their building, they were gonna put two wells down in our aquifer behind their existing building. And I was fortunate enough to get the job to do the test wells. We came up with the nicest little 5-gallon in a household well you ever want to see. But we didn't hit the kind of water that they were looking for. As a result of it, they paid to run the main from our existing well.
Lucky then.
To the East Hampton. Then they brought the East Hampton line down to the Southampton line. That's why there used to be two hydrants there.
Yeah, okay, got it.
So, Big Y paid for all of that, which was, that was a win-win for us.
Sure.
And Big Y's been generous to us with the pumping station that's on their property. So, they have been generous to the town.
Good. Okay. Well, I think the, the other issue that I wanted to bring up tonight while we were here, just in clarity on the ARPA application. Because we're gonna actually pick it up next week at our regular meeting. But we had gotten the first application, which we had approved, I believe, for 180,000. And that was, we understood was only for a very small portion of what you all needed, given that the replacement of the water main, basically from Fomer Road area or even, I don't, is it Brickyard or Fomer Road, one or the other, up to Clark Street and then Clark Street to East Street and then East Street to Palmer Meadow Road. So, three different phases, right? And we had at least started out with at least a portion of what you needed, knowing that that was nowhere near.
Originally it was 1.8 million, which is all the 100% of the output we got.
About 10% or something of what you had originally said you'd need it. So, the 180,000 has been approved. But then I understand that they've got a second request in now for either an additional amount or I guess I wasn't totally clear on what we have.
Or an additional.
That's what they have. Because you've got, you've got 265,000 available to put toward the project, is what I think the application said somewhere in here. Right. And then you were gonna be getting other grant money and so forth.
And we are borrowing that we're allowed to.
Right. But there was, I thought, there was something that just came in from Tom, maybe? Eddie probably saw this quicker than we did. There was an April application. That's the one we approved and then.
And then we were going back and forth because Tom just kept asking it.
Yeah.
That could be used as a portion that they already did across the bridge.
Okay. Because Tom, well, Tom came in with one in, in October.
That's the new one.
That's the new one. Okay. Which is basically, so the request there was the 1,620,000. So, that's way above the funds that we even have. Hi.
I'm just checking. We're, we're leaving, so you're, you're the only one.
Oh, okay.
Move back cheese.
Okay.
Sure, move back cheese.
I do. I'll take care of it. Thanks.
So, I guess that's what we weren't clear about. So, the 180,000 is gonna be used for the first phase from Fomer toward, sorry, toward Clark Street or, uh, that's right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're in the process of bidding, or not bidding, uh, we're completing the plans and then we're gonna get the bid hopefully in January or February. Prices are off the wall.
Yeah.
So, we're kinda delaying as long as we can, hoping that material prices will come down. Piping prices are four or five times what they were, so.
This is gonna be PVC pipe or something?
Yes. So, that may or may not reset. We may or may not have enough money. We have estimates from our engineers of how much we need to spend or what it'll come in at. We're gonna put it out to bid in phases. We're gonna use that money to pay for whatever section we can. We like to work this way to save money as we come along. There's different goals that make it easier to, to get to certain spots and end at certain spots. So, the engineers are all working on that. So, there was some thought about using that original 180 for the bridge. We all had discussions about that. That's not, we're not gonna use that to pay down.
Not gonna.
We wanna use that for moving the main along.
New pipe, okay.
We've already got that financed.
You've got the grant money, I think, for hazard mitigation or whatever.
The rest of it is going into our financing package.
Did with that, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, we had a financing package that was done, a financing package of borrowing approval that was done by town meeting.
Yeah.
I think that was probably four years ago now.
Okay.
And we've used portions of that, but we still have some of that left. And that we can just, we can just spend it and then the town treasurer puts it out.
Right. So, on the, on the chart that we have here, we just kinda broke it down into the, into the phases, right? The, both the April and the September, October one are the same amount. So, for Phase 1, which I'm assuming that's where you're starting, so Fomer Road to Clark Street, the construction cost there is 480,000. Then there's some extra engineering costs and some contingency in there. So, of the 100, of the 480, we've provided 180 towards that already. And is what Tom is requesting in addition to the 180 then?
Yes.
But not for a million something, because that's, that's where I'm not seeing the price of what he's asking for.
I guess it's 265.
265 is what I think they had, is what they.
They had 180 from the first application.
Right. I understand that, but.
I think what's getting confusing is.
It says additional funds available to, for the project is 265. So, I took that as.
Those are funds we have.
Right, their funds. And so, the total amount of ARPA funds requested says 1,620,000 on the.
Yeah, that's the bigger of the whole thing.
Yeah. If we'd like to, sure.
We were just, you know, we put in the maximum.
Yeah, yeah. So, if you add the, you know, the 1.8 million, which is the sum of the 180,000 plus the 1.62 that we're, that we're asking. And then add the 265.
That's where the total comes.
That's where the total comes.
Sure, yeah. No, I got that.
So, that includes all three phases.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I got that. So.
So, what was the question?
But, well, so.
Essence, you're asking for the rest of the ARPA funds.
No, no, actually, we don't have that much money though.
Yeah.
Over 50% of it's already been spent.
Right. So, the, the 180 is.
Probably over 70% of it's already.
Yeah. So, 180 has definitely been allocated to you guys for that purpose. So, to get through the, if, would you take the 265,000 that theoretically you say you've got available, would that all go to Phase 1? Or is that, are you splitting that out over?
Well, our goal is to do.
What's the difference between, was this Phase 1?
Yeah.
Their amount plus the 180, what's the difference?
The total for Phase 1 is 604,000, including some of the engineering costs and contingency. We've provided 180. And then if, if you had your 265 that you were allocating toward that, that's 445,000 toward Phase 1. So, 445 out of the 604 gives us 159,000 more, I believe.
But your master plan must have already kind of accommodated or that you already had a plan in terms of funding this through debt, right? So, this additional funding will help to reduce that, right?
Yes, it'll help to reduce, yeah. It's gonna help to reduce our debt. We're gonna borrow no matter what. And we have some, we're gonna use a little bit of our retained earnings. We need to keep that up there. But like I said, we're chasing prices.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
The wrong, we're the wrong way.
It's come up more than once. I mean, the pipes for the cemetery, they say they happened. They asked for money from the town. They didn't have enough money. So, they had to go back and get some more money at the next town meeting. I think that's basically what's, I'm surprised, frankly, everyone's saying that the bridge was delayed twice. I still think it was open pretty quickly, given the materials.
So, I guess that's just for clarity's sake, so that we'd understand what we're talking about, is that.
Yeah.
You know.
We requested the full amount.
Right.
And then maybe nobody else was gonna ask.
Yeah, okay, right. Well, wrong on that part.
So, we, you know, I don't know if you know, but there was a survey that was done on how to spend the ARPA money. Because I think, you know, the whole time I've been on the Select Board, like this is a pretty amazing position to be in, to be able to be given 1.8 million dollars to the town and not having to go to town meeting or other screening things. So, we wanted to be conscientious about it. So, we did a survey and number one came up as internet. And I worry that we haven't done enough to try to do that. I think we did one thing, the town meeting approval of the next step on fiber. The second one was premium pay for town employees, which we were, you know, we did a vote in favor, which is probably the biggest amount of money that went out. And the third was support to small businesses. So, we've been able to do a little bit on that level with businesses that have been hurt. And I forget what the levels were after that, but I'm not so sure that too many town residents would say, "We wanna give money to the water department."
Just remember how much it is in interest.
Yeah, right.
That's, you know, and I know everybody has a different opinion of what they do with it. And I get cranked up about the internet one because I, you know, we buy our internet from somebody.
Yeah.
And so, now you're gonna go put in infrastructure and you're still gonna have, you're still gonna get a $200 internet bill, even though you put money into it.
It's the number one thing, though, that people complain about.
But, you know what I, you know what I'm saying, is the, the water pipes are ours.
Yeah.
And the water rates are set based on how expensive it is for to run the system.
Right.
So, if we get water mains in and it's cheaper to run the system, the water rates can stay down first and people will use more of it.
Yeah.
If you go and do something with internet, people are still gonna have to pay 3, it's not gonna be free, they're still gonna have to pay $300.
But we manage it. We own it.
Right.
It's our little enterprise fund.
So, we've got friends who live in Westfield, right?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's the people that live in Westfield and they like, they liked it and, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not sure about that whole thing.
I'm not sure about it either. I think it might be a stepping stone to something better. We could dump millions of dollars into it.
Technology's gonna change.
And then find out that it becomes obsolete. I think the consideration, and I'm actually glad you had that, 75 to 80% of the people in town do access public water. Because as an enterprise fund, the funds came into Southampton to all the residents theoretically, right? But only a portion of them use public water.
Well, actually, no.
No? Because the public services.
When you go to the school and you go to the buildings, you have the privilege of using the water at a lower rate. So, so like if, you can provide clean water to the school, the school pays less.
And town hall and all the other.
There's fire protection.
Sure.
And actually, one of the reasons the system was originally put in was fire protection.
Yeah.
And they worried about fire more than they worried about clean drinking water, because everybody had a bucket and a well.
Yeah.
Okay. And just for clarity, so what's written in the application is that this could be bid out by the end of '22, with construction starting in spring of '23 and completion by spring or summer of '24. Now, is that Phase 1 or that's the entire ball of wax?
That's Phase 1, 2, 3.
All of it.
Oh, wow. So, you're gonna find the whole thing.
But it depends. It depends on.
Materials, right.
And is there other grant money that you've got available to use for any of the Clean Water Trust stuff or any, anything else out there that's?
There's some, there's some revolving funds that we can borrow from, but it's still, we would still have to go to town meeting to borrow more than.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, I mean in grant money, federal grant money, anything?
Yeah, it's not gonna be in grant money. We thought there was gonna be.
Yeah.
But that never came. It just turned, it's all that money that, that they said they were putting into infrastructure. It's basically just loans.
Okay.
It's, it's just low-interest loans. So, it is, it is worth something.
Yeah.
Because you get a low-interest loan.
Right.
So, the last time we did the borrowing, it turned out more tricky to borrow from one of those low-interest loans than it would have been commercially. Which is more work.
Yeah, it was a little work, yeah.
Because that was when we borrowed from USDA, was it?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's harder for the treasurer to pay it back. It's more complicated, more counting, and it's more. It almost seems like you're better off just going with a commercial bank.
Yeah. All right. Well, those were just clarifying questions, I think. I don't know if anybody else has any, but we won't really decide on our budget. Talk about next week.
So, I just, it sounded like you were making an offer maybe.
I was just doing math.
A suggestion, right? The phase, so we get 180.
Yes.
And we get the 265. And if we get another 159, let's say, that would get us up to 604. And that would be Phase 1. Would that be?
That could be a fall.
I thought the difference was.
That'd be Phase 1.
Oh, okay.
That'd be for Phase 1, right?
Right.
So.
So, we would have Phase 1.
And that's up maybe to 159.
We would have.
I don't know if there's something you even have available.
What is available left on the, I don't know how many applications are still out there.
There's, there's a few more out there. I'd have to look. I didn't bring my chart tonight, so.
There's 159,000.
Yeah, there's that much. We've got probably 600,000 or something left, that's.
How much?
600, yeah, left.
That could, that could get Phase 1 done without borrowing.
I mean, so an extra 159 would get us.
I'd be happy with it.
I'd be happy with that, yeah.
Well, we'll bring it up for discussion. I was just trying to do the basic math, trying to understand.
There've been a number of requests that came in, like with the tennis court repair, you know, they, you know, there's a number of things that we ask for, you know, like updated numbers and figures and things.
It looks like pickleball, huh?
I know.
I mean, it's great, you know, I'm very happy with how you distributed the money. I don't, I, I, that was complicated. You did a great job. I think we got a lot of, a lot for the money that was given to us. I think a lot of services that we got, a lot, a lot of good things happened with it so far.
Good. Okay. Well, we'll pick it up next week when we have our, our actual Select Board meeting and have that on the agenda to really talk about the ARPA. But that just helps me clarify a few things. We weren't sure, having both applications, we weren't quite sure where, where you were coming from on that. And we had heard the idea about using the 180 for something else for the bridge, you know, swap it out. And it's like, all right, this is getting a little complicated here. Let's just try and understand it. Okay.
So, can I just ask one more question about this now that I'm looking at this?
Technically, we have, no, but I look at it even though I signed it, we haven't received that application yet. So, I was just looking at it and noticed that it wasn't signed on their end. It was just emailed to me.
Oh, really?
So, if you might wanna.
Go back and sign it. Go back and sign it? Okay.
So, the Phase 1, 2, 3 goes from Fomer Road and I think when the bridge was done, the water was replaced up to Brickyard, right? The pipes, the bridge was done plus the Fomer to Brickyard. So, what would be, what would need to happen after that? Because this would take it from Fomer to Palmer Meadow.
Well, yeah, but Phase 1 is Fomer to Clark.
So, then do you have a plan from there to do Palmer Meadow further down?
Palmer Meadow's all set.
So.
Once we get to Palmer Meadow, we're good that way.
And College Highway, you said, was done in front of all the stores there?
The stores was done.
Okay. So, this would be a huge.
The main that goes from Gun Road to Big Y is, that is half-life, so that's still good. This way is bad to.
But that's gonna be done probably.
That'd be another phase. We're hoping that gets involved in the road.
Right.
Right, right, right. Because that's already approved by Mascot.
Yeah, we don't know when that's happening.
We had to shorten it to Sophie Circle.
Well, that's one of those coordinating pieces. That's the road.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, I mean, at least we don't have sewers to think about, but when they go through and do that, when the construction's scheduled, you know, do we make sure that the water department, we may have had that engineered out. So, at the same time.
We got it.
Right. At least from here to the bridge, if not to Sophie Lane, which is.
We, we'll have a design, yeah.
Okay.
We, yeah, we already funded the design. The design is almost complete.
That's, that's also the.
Don't let that room get built without the water main.
Yes, okay.
It'll take a couple of years to design and then be able to do it.
But we may not wait because that, that's a critical water main.
Right.
And it's becoming.
Well, because of the price of things and what was approved several years ago, it used to go from here to the bridge and from the bridge to county. Now, the only, we're only gonna be able to go as far as Sophie Circle.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll have to do funding for the rest of it at another time. I don't think there's any immediate plan for that, right?
Yeah, Whispering Meadow.
Whispering Meadow, okay.
That's Sophie Circle from beyond that, yeah, yeah.
And because it gets trickier after that and because of the federal regulations of either putting a sidewalk on both sides or having that eight-foot sheer.
Yeah.
And you all live here, so you travel it. So, you know what the topography is after Whispering Meadow, trying to fit that in.
Right, right.
You know, the other possibility is rather than have it done by the tip and have that requirements is can we grab maybe some of this infrastructure money that's supposed to.
Right, right.
Do it that way.
Whenever it appears.
Right. Right, and they keep telling us about it.
Right, exactly.
I think she should be happy if it didn't happen right away.
Yeah, probably. All right, well, that's good. I think that's all we had for, for particular agenda items.
So, yeah, all, the other thing, I can answer the questions now because I had conversations with Jim and, and Tom, but...
We have two PCFs.
Following up on the two PCFs is the one for Dennis. Yes, he was evaluated, I've seen the evaluation. He got all fives with 1.4, so his average was 4.9. So yes, that was done. And on the other one, I can't confirm as I thought, but I didn't want to say it just on my own thought process, is if you go back, whether it's 18 months or two years, and I can't remember how long, there used to be another piece of the administrative assistant in the highway department, not only the 20 hours for the highway department and the five hours for the transfer station, but there used to be time, which my memory was, I think it was like five hours a week at that time, that was also allocated to that position on the PCF or the water department.
For the water department, okay.
So what they were looking for in that PCF is to re-energize that basic agreement or use of that same individual for the five hours.
Up the five hours.
Up the five hours.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right, so we have two PCFs before, so the first one then was...
Can I just ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would that, does that have any impact on what the treasurer's office does for the water department by increasing the number of hours now for an administrative assistant in...
It wouldn't be doing the same work now.
No, none of it.
No.
No time...
So the billing is still done within treasury?
In the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
No, I figured that, but I thought they were, they must have been doing something...
An additional five hours are going to the administrative...
We have tons and tons and tons of paperwork that has to be filed and documents and...
Okay.
Tons, tons of things that need to be done.
Yeah. So on the Dennis Senical one, so we tried really, really hard last year because of the whole mass resignation in the country and worker, workforce problem. We tried very hard to increase people's pay. This is the second year in a row, because I think we raised up a lot of department heads the previous time. Not enough, that's why you went with the contract. But, so he did get a 6% raise from last year, plus the 2%, plus premium pay. So just to put that out there, that, that's, he did get a fair amount of increase in one fiscal year.
So he's got 2% in July with everyone else.
Plus a 6%, he was on the, because some people got more, some people got less. And then premium pay, which everybody got, so... But the personnel policies say that if he had a satisfactory evaluation, then they can do an additional two, so it's not anything, you know, it's certainly something that's within the rights of the personnel policy. I just wanted to say that those were the increases that he got in one fiscal year.
Okay. So this would be a new fiscal year, right? And this is asking for a 2% merit increase, and this is based on an actual documented personnel evaluation.
Correct, and they're also doing it, and rather than July 1st, they're doing it in conjunction with the individual's anniversary date.
That's what I saw.
Which looks like it's, no, sorry, September, right? Is that right? Effective date, September 24th.
Right.
So will we retroactive?
So retroactive to September 24th, '22. So it's on the anniversary date, okay, thanks for that information. Okay, so we have this before, so if somebody would like to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2% merit increase for Dennis Senical.
Okay.
Who has a second?
Second, all right. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's approved. And the second one is...
Is this the same rate that she gets in your other roles?
Yes.
I believe so. Right, and this one is for the, an admin assistant, starting October 3rd. This is for Robin Richard, for up to five hours as an admin assistant within the water department.
Is she full-time benefited in any way? With their combining upper roles, so it's not going to be an increase other than a percentage of retirement or whatever, right?
Right, and she's already benefited, right? Because of her work with highway and, with highway and transfer station, right?
Yeah, she's at 25 hours now, this would take her to 30.
30, up to 30, right, okay. All right, so, and that is at 1964 an hour? Okay, so...
I'll move to approve the PCF for Robin Richard for admin assistant, part-time benefited at 1964 an hour.
And just a question, was this advertised, this position, was it...
No, no, she's not going to be working for us. She stays working for the highway department, but it's the same way we use...
She's detailed to them.
Same way we use the highway employees.
Yeah.
So it's not really, not our employee, right?
Correct, it's just moving, moving things around, yeah.
Okay.
It's paid out of your account, so, yeah.
Yeah, but it's basically kind of looked at as a detail, really, from one...
We did this before, 10 years, 10 years ago, we, we used...
Well, actually, up until, I think it's like two years ago that was still in place.
Oh, that's right.
We were still doing that, yeah.
Yeah, I think you had the previous person.
Previous, yeah, yes.
Right, yeah. Okay, so I think we have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion's approved, both PCFs are approved. Per the effective dates, Robin on 10/3 and Dennis on 9/24. Okay, perfect, I think that's it.
That actually was Robin's, it'll be, it'll all be 10/3, it'll be maybe next week or whatever.
Oh, because it's past.
Oh, past the year old period, yeah, okay. The next year old then, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have any documents to sign, we don't have any minutes. I think our meeting, next meeting is October 25th, so we will be ready to adjourn, but if you guys would like to adjourn your water commissioner meeting?
Okay. Move to adjourn our joint meeting.
Aye.
All right, thank you much for coming.
Thank you.
For providing all the information.
One question for Ed before we go. So Ed, we got your message about the ceremony or opening of the bridge for...
Yes.
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
Right.
November 3rd. Fireworks?
Were you or somebody going to be reaching out to the legislators?
Have.
So, yeah, so, so far, we have confirmation.
Bye, good night.
Good night.
Lindsay Samenosa and John Bellis.
Okay, good.
Been taken care of already. Okay, so our next meeting is October 25th, and I don't think we have any other business that we need to discuss tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
We are adjourned at about 20:50.